Going to start the meeting. Thank you, yes. I'll call the meeting to order. I ask everyone to please rise for the singing of our national anthem. Thank you. Please be seated. All right. Item 1.0 is additions to the agenda. We are a nice cozy group this morning, so I don't have to look very far to my left or right. Any additions to the agenda? All right, seeing none, could I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Counselor Fredrickson, all in favor? That is carried. Item 3.0 is corrections or amendments to the February 1st, 2016 Regular Meeting of Council minutes. Any corrections or amendments? Counselor Bossard is not here, so I'm not surprised. Adoption of the February 1st, 2016 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes, could I get a motion to adopt? Please, Counselor Long, all in favor? That is carried. Under 5.0, it's my pleasure to read a proclamation in respect of Children's Wish Month. Here, I have to find the right page. There we go. Sorry. Here we go. "Children's Wish Month, March 2017. On March 1st, 2017, Children's Wish Day kicks off a month-long campaign to celebrate the magic of a wish through 31 days of fundraising and referral recognition across Canada. Whereas, the Children's Wish Foundation of Canada is a uniquely Canadian charity that helps Canadian children, families, and communities by granting the favorite wish of a child diagnosed with a life-threatening illness. And whereas, since 1984, Children's Wish has worked tirelessly to grant heartfelt wishes to nearly 25,000 children and their families. And whereas, money raised during the campaign will assist the Alberta and Northwest Territories Chapters towards their goal of granting 130 wishes in 2017. Now therefore, I Mayor Glenn McLean do hereby proclaim that the month of March 2017 shall be recognized as Children's Wish Month in the town of Drayton Valley." It was my great pleasure to have read that. Now, do I understand that you would like to say a few words? Is that... Please, if you could approach the podium, there should be a microphone there. And just for the minutes, if you could state your name for the recording secretary and...
Good morning, everyone. My name is Brittany, and I'm here on behalf of the Children's Wish Foundation here in Drayton Valley. Many of you may wonder how the Children's Wish Foundation got started in your town. I'm here to tell you our story, and let me begin with things very close to my heart. In 2009, my grandfather was diagnosed with cancer, and unfortunately, he took his life. Even though I was only 12 years old, I could still understand the heartache my family was facing in this battle against this disease and this loss. From this moment on, I began to look for ways to help other towns going through troubling times. One night, I was reading the newspaper, and I seen an ad for the Children's Wish Foundation. They were looking for volunteers in Drayton Valley to help start up the first walk for wishes. As soon as I seen it, I asked my mom to be helped. She said yes. Not only did I get this support from my mom, but I also got it from my grandfather. I came in so much support, it really became a family affair. My good friend Shady, her sister, her mom, my mom, my grandmother, all of us sat on the committee, and we currently still do, along with other amazing members. Our first walk, we raised over $10,000. We did so well, the foundation asked us if we were interested in having a gala. We thought about the amount of work we were going to need to do this event. We were aware of the endless hours, monthly and weekly meetings hitting the town for donations and sponsorships, as well as selling 300 plus tickets. We decided to go ahead with it. Drayton Valley amazed us with our first gala. The amount of support we received was unbelievable. We raised $100,000 in just one night. The craziest thing about this was we still had incredible amounts of support from the community. After four walks and five galas, I am beyond thankful and amazed that I get the privilege to tell you, we raised over $400,000. This means we have given four families in the Drayton Valley and surrounding area a wish. You may have noticed that Drayton Valley did not see a lining applied to Gala 2016. This is because, as a committee, we have realized the harsh times in our community. We are facing, and decided it'd be best to move our gala to October 20th, 2017. We hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much, Brittany. Any... Judy, any... Did you have any comments? Brittany's done it all? Okay, all right. Thank you so much for your presentation. Again, it was my honor to proclaim March Children's Wish Month in Drayton Valley. And on behalf of council, I want to extend our sincere thanks to you and all the individuals who volunteer their time and talent to raise money for the Children's Wish Foundation, particularly here in Drayton Valley. And you do great work. Thank you. All right. Moving on to our delegation. 6.2 is the Historical Society of Drayton Valley with Charlie Miner. Are you going to...
I'm just going to sit here.
Okay, all right. Pam Schwab standing in for Charlie Miner. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Pam Schwab, and I'm president of the Drayton Valley District Historical Society. And it is my pleasure today to introduce you to our presenter, a young lady who has been valedictorian of her high school graduating class, and was also serving for years, second in her year, with the University of Leffbridge. And she's taking Bachelor of Fine Arts art, art history and museum studies. It is my pleasure to introduce him to Kirsten Schumuh.
Thank you, Pam. And welcome, Kirsten.
Thank you, everyone. Good morning. The Drayton Valley District Historical Society has been active within the district since the early 1980s with a mandate to serve the community through preservation and display of municipal history. The Drayton Valley Historical Society manages the museum here in town solely on a budget that is annually allocated by the town of Drayton Valley and Brasswood County with occasional sponsorships around corporations within the community whenever needed, at a special event or a special exhibit. The Historical Society have many plans for the future growth and development of the museum, as well as other historical programs. Such development plans have been designed with the intent to provide the community with sustainable access to Drayton Valley history and to lay the foundation for future generations to continue our mission of preserving, recording, and displaying Drayton Valley history. Included with your presentation notes, there are attached copies of the Drayton Valley and District Historical Society's Statement of Purpose, our mission statement, our objectives, and our mandate as outlined in the bylaws of the society. As stated in all four articles, it is the main purpose of the society to preserve and present objects, stories pertaining to the history of Drayton Valley and district for the enjoyment of the public. Such goals are designed to be achieved through researching, collecting, recording, interpreting, and exhibiting tangible objects, and written and oral stories for residents of the community. However, the museum is currently facing many dilemmas regarding the future development of it. The services provided by the museum and the society are unique within the community, as are intended not only to serve the present public, but to also preserve the collections for the benefit of future generations. For several years prior, the museum has been focused on collecting artifacts and growing that collection. Yet the collection has grown exponentially over the years, and we're facing many difficulties in where we're going to be putting these artifacts within our collection. Museums globally are also undergoing changes in terms of their mandates and services to their public. Programming and community development have become significant facets of museums with the intent to provide spaces to initiate community discussions through contemporary exhibits and programs. In order for the museum to remain relevant within our own community, the museum must undergo changes to incorporate and officiate such discussions for visitors and community members. It is through the museum's current and severe problems, as well as our own planning for the development of the future of the museum, for having a relevant museum within the Drayton Valley community, that the museum now requires community support and interest that has been overall quite lacking for several years. Part of the activities of the society not only include preserving artifacts, but include researching to the history of the community. The museum and the Historical Society have access to sources and databases that other community members may not use, such as the Government of Alberta and the Government of Canada archives, as well as visiting other Alberta museums and accessing their archives, their libraries, their photographs, and their stories. It is the duty of the museum and the society to present research findings in a manner that is entirely unbiased and attests to the true and factual history of the Drayton Valley district. At the moment, members of the Historical Society are currently undertaking research into the First Nations' history of Drayton Valley, researching who was here, when they were here, and trying to get in touch with elders of these First Nations bands to tell them their stories. The members and volunteers are currently working to contact the First Nations directly, so that in years in the future, an exhibit may be developed at the museum that tests to their stories and shows history from a different perspective, perhaps. The Drayton Valley and District Historical Society has also assisted in publishing numerous holos and books about the history of Drayton Valley that we keep at the museum for purchase by the public. However, our main problem at the museum is the size of our collection and housing that and making sure that the collection is sustained for future generations. Currently, the lack of support from the community is detrimental to the future presentation of objects that are being donated, and those that are yet to be donated. Our preservation capabilities are limited due to ineffective storage and lack of proper materials and space to undertake recording and preservation efforts. The museum currently houses a minimum of 3,005 objects of historical significance. However, as this number increases annually, our capabilities for displaying become limited to an extreme, and we have no access to proper storage for the access. In a few short years, the museum will be unable to accept any other donations due to lack of housing facilities. Our efforts to preserve Drayton Valley history will no longer extend to new donations, therefore eliminating our capabilities to properly serve the public, both present and future. Museum is also facing many dilemmas regarding conservation of artifacts due to improper display conditions and elemental damage. There are several examples within your presentation notes of artifacts that we have that we are facing difficulties with storing, preserving, and conserving. Water leaks occurred in three of five historical buildings at the museum last summer, which compromised the structural and historical integrity of the buildings affected. Many artifacts were affected by the water damage, which led to staining, rust, and in some extreme cases, complete and irreparable destruction of artifacts and their stories. The museum also possesses the potential to host a variety of outdoor programs for students, for children, and for adults during the summer and operational months. Presently, the museum does not host outdoor programs since the community has not shown enough interest or support for such events to be beneficial for neither the museum nor the community. With more community interest, the museum would be capable of facilitating programs including creative artistic showings and crafts, research workshops, artistic-based exhibits and planning, collaborative curation initiatives, as well as many others. Just to give you an idea of where we're at with community support and with community interest, at the summer of 2016 operational months, from May 16th to August 31st, the museum guestbook showed that the museum had only 88 visitors, which did not include the five school tours at the museum hosted during May and June, most of these visitors being tourists from out of town. At this time, the Drayton Valley Historical Society is taking efforts to further ourselves and to make sure that we are providing a sustainable access to the history and the community as a camp. We are undertaking the Recognized Museum program through the Alberta Museums Association to enact official collections management policies and to become a museum that is accredited with the provincial government. The Historical Society is also arranging a summer of commemorative displays and events to be hosted in 2018 at the Drayton Valley museum grounds. The schedule is also included in your presentation notes with a list of the events and what we hope to achieve through the themes of the week. The weeks will commemorate the 65th anniversary of the oil production from Skony Pembina One Oil Well, which began producing oil on Geotec in 1953. The anniversary weeks will feature events that are specific to the themes of the week, as outlined by the schedule. The volunteers for the Historical Society began the research into early First Nations activities with the intent to reveal the information to the public in July of 2018 at the start of Week 6. All information presented in the anniversary days will be presented in a manner that encourages public discussions and reflects multiple perspectives on the history of the area. The Historical Society has approached sponsors for support during the anniversary days program and have been well received in doing so. Currently, we have approached the Drayton Valley region, art resources, and warehouses in Drayton Valley, and have received agreements from all for sponsorship and partnership during the week's events and displays. It is important for those who are interested in seeing the museum persevere to actively assist in museum operations and management. Those interested can encourage public interest in the museum through social media activity, primarily by liking, sharing our Facebook and Twitter pages, and our events win the so choose to host them. Individuals may also assist by partnering with the museum to run summer programs at the grounds for the public, and in doing so, share them and draw in more public interest. Individuals can directly partner with the museum to plan a program, or they can initiate a partnership between the Historical Society and another community organization. You may also assist by becoming a liaison with your organization through the museum or the Historical Society in attending one of our monthly meetings to stay updated on where the museum is at, in terms of how we are progressing with the Recognized Museum program and with further development of the museum. As delegates for the Historical Society, we encourage you to speak with us following this meeting to arrange further times for more detailed meetings, should you be interested in continuing to support the museum and generate further interest in the museum. We also encourage you to arrange times in the spring to visit the museum and observe the current displays and conditions that are facing the preservation of artifacts. Thank you very much for your time and support.
Thank you very much, Kirsten. A very comprehensive overview of activities and needs. And I should have started by saying U of L students are welcome here anytime. It's my alma mater. So was there anything further on your behalf, Charlie? I know you're publicity shy, so...
This is a familiar place for me, but I still do have a little nervous coming here. This side of the fence is different, even after all these years. I guess about all I could add, the agreement is Kirsten is she's been she's worked for us for the last three summers, coming from Drayton High School for two years, and last year after her first year of university. She will be back this summer. She's agreed to come back. All I gotta do is find the money.
That's it?
Sure, that is that. So, well, so we're looking forward to a good and busy summer. I certainly invite all of you to please come down and have a look, probably anytime after the first of June, any day, it'll be open, seven days a week for at least part of every day. And if there's any more information, go over to find me, and if you have any questions, it's fine, we can try and answer.
Does council have any questions? Counselor Fredrickson?
Not necessarily a question, just a suggestion. And I know this won't cost our cover operating costs, but definitely if you guys are hosting events in the 65th anniversary sphere, we have a 65th anniversary or 60th, yeah, why did I say 65th? 60th anniversary grant process as well. And then also looking at some of the things that if you're hosting events, that you would be eligible for the events grant definitely going into the second quarter. So I just encourage you guys to access some of the grants that we do have available. Okay, okay, excellent. And, yeah, that's all I had. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Counselor Fredrickson.
We are looking at grants, certainly for funding the summer staff. With regards to the 60th anniversary, we're aware of it, aware of the grant funds maybe from the town. In the months ahead, we will be looking to see what kind of a project we may be able to come up with and work on that, and feature the title of this.
Counselor Fredrickson?
I wasn't going to mention this, but I thought, well, since Charlie had mentioned what he had mentioned, around our 60th anniversary committee, we had talked about basically looking at some of the events that the town already hosts, Canada Day being one of them. And I'm looking at your schedule here in Week 4. You have beginning July 1st, ending July 7th commemoration to forestry. And one of the things that we were really looking at doing is trying to link the public that we have coming to that space at Canada Day, which is between the Rotary Library and the Curling Rink. And how can we shuttle them back and forth between that and the museum on that day, which would then get, you know, people who might not be aware of what's happening at the museum or what the museum has to offer, it would bring that public there. So I know we've talked about that at the 60th anniversary ad hoc committee, and I'm sure as we kind of make our preparations for Canada Day, some of those kind of things will gel together.
I wonder if I'm maybe I'm about to misspeak, but are you referring to their 2018 programming? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought. But that does not preclude the Historical Society from engaging in a an application for a 60th anniversary grant to host some or partner on some kind of activity such as Canada Day, or some other appropriate time over the summer months to to both, you know, bring visitors to the museum, but also to heighten the prominence of our 60th anniversary celebrations.
We will be looking at that, and hopefully, we can go with something a little fitting in the foreground.
Right. That's fantastic. Anything further, council?
Well, thank you very much for your total time in this morning. We appreciate your assistance.
Thank you very much. We look forward to events both this year and next in 2018. You've got a really impressive schedule of presentations over the course of that summer, and looking forward to it then, but hopefully, we can do some work together this year, too.
Well, we appreciate that. And we're pretty excited about it, because Kirsten has been a pretty good fighter in the past...
Yeah. And thank you so much. And thank you again, Kirsten, for your presentation. Very articulate, very comprehensive, full marks. If I had anything to say about it, which I don't. Thanks so much. All right. Item 6.3 under delegations is Staff Sergeant Callahan to review the RCMP January statistics. Good morning.
Let's make it a little higher for... So, good morning, everyone. So, going over January 2017 stats for this past month, I can advise that we were able to deal with three drivers that received 24-hour suspensions. We wrote 38 tickets within the town, and we had one impaired this past month. A bit of a difficult one, where we had to actually draw blood for it, so we're still waiting for the results on that. Going through our stats here, on our assault side, we had eight incidents this last January. Three of those are family violence files, and all of them resulted in charges. Three of them were bar fights, where our subjects ran away before we got there, so they obviously weren't found in those cases. And two were unfounded, where basically they didn't meet the requirement for assault to be late in those instances. We unfortunately had two incidents of sex assault this past month, all in the same file, so our investigation is still ongoing on that. We had two incidents of break and enter this past month. One subject was found underneath the deck of the residence. That subject has been charged. Subject's name is Justin Crabbe. He is 18 years of age. There's also a business where a chainsaw was stolen this past month. We had, for theft of vehicle, we had six incidents. Unfortunately, the vast majority due to the temperatures that happened in January related to the vehicles running and the doors unlocked. Unfortunately, that's how it happened, but crimes of opportunity versus a specific crime group or crime people in general that were doing it. So, again, unfortunately, we still have to make sure our vehicles are secured when they're running. Moving on to our theft under files, we had 28 this past month, which seems to be a bit of an increase, looking at it. Nine of the incidents were theft from vehicles. Unlocked vehicles were unfortunately usually the issue. There was five incidents of shoplifting and things, again, make-up convenience foods like subs and pop and stuff, and usually happening at the gas stations. 14 of those were related to small items, mainly from businesses. Moving to our mischief, there's 18 incidents. Two of those went to charges, basically where they either were breaking a door, or I believe the other one was a screen door that was damaged as a result of a drunken person. So 13 of those unfortunately were unsolved, and those range from car doors being kicked to windows being broken, where we weren't able to locate a suspect in those incidents. Two of them were apparently drunk subjects who were gone on arrival, and one was an unwelcome guest, who again was gone on arrival. We followed up with that later and gave them a warning about their actions. Moving on to our frauds, I noticed we had a spike this month up to eight incidents. Some of the highlights on those were a phone call where someone from, and I'll put it in quotations, Visa, was getting personal information for someone for the purposes of defrauding them. There was an unauthorized purchase made on an online fraud, pretty much later determined to be just some security habits. That's been resolved with the banks. And unfortunately, one of our larger frauds I've seen in a while was an online fraud, and had to deal with kind of a lonely hearts, you know, meeting someone online that was obtaining money from them, so quite a large substantial amount of money was taken. We're still working on that. Moving on to page number three. Just want to go over our drug enforcement. We had a couple of possession charges this past month. One of those was with regards to a subject that was in possession of heroin. That subject's name was Colton Strachan. He's been charged accordingly, and another was with regards to small amounts of marijuana. Just to, again, advise everybody that marijuana still is illegal in Canada, and until the legislation changes, it will be enforced. The only thing I did notice was a drop, you know, of our false alarms from 24 last year to 19, which is encouraging. And really, the last page which goes over our standard deviations on things, again, we did have a spike in our truck, an SUV and van. Coincidentally, all of those vehicles that were taken were trucks. So, again, a spike on a sex assault issue, but we're still working through that. And the last one was speeding violations from one to two, so because it's a new year, obviously, there is going to be a deviation there, and we're trying to score a little bit better on that stuff. Just a couple of other things to tidy up. We had, starting last Friday, a new member come into our office. His name is Jeff Sirvanyet. And unfortunately, we had the departure of Constable Yulinowski, which is our SRO, moving on to a different police force, so we wish him very good luck in the future. It puts a big hole into our CSRO program. month. One of those was with regards to a subject that was in possession of heroin. That subject's name was Colton Strachan. And he's been charged accordingly. And another one was with regards to small amounts of marijuana. Just to, again, advise everybody that marijuana still is illegal in Canada. And until the legislation changes, it will be enforced. The only thing I did notice was a drop, you know, of our false alarms from 24 last year to 19, which is encouraging. And really, the last page which goes over our standard deviations on things. Again, we did have a spike in our truck, an SUV and van. Coincidentally, all of those vehicles that were taken were trucks. So, again, a spike on a sex assault issue, but we're still working through that. And the last one was speeding violations from one to two. So because it's a new year, obviously, there's going to be a deviation there. And we're trying to score a little bit better on that stuff. Just a couple of other things to tidy up. We had, starting last Friday, a new member come into our office. His name is Jeff Sirvanyet. And unfortunately, we had the departure of Constable Julanowski, which is our CSRO, moving on to a different police force. So we wish him very good luck in the future. It puts a big hole into our CSRO program. And we're working towards resolving that. So we're making inroads that way and working with our staffing partners in order to try and get someone in there to get someone back in the schools on a regular basis.
Do we? Thank you, Staff Sergeant. Do we have any estimated, I know it's difficult to pinpoint, but do we have a timeframe within which we expect the CSRO position to be filled?
Been keeping the foot on the gas with our staffing people. It's, it's really tough to, to give you any sort of, any sort of real situation. Right now, I know that the position that we advertised for is closed. I think they're sorting through, you know, the applicants in order to see if there's anyone who's suitable to come. There is certain difficulties that we have to overcome with regards to making sure that they're releasable. Because anyone can apply, but there's certain criteria that have to be met before they can be released. So I've been working through that with our staffing section. And if we don't find anyone suitable, I'm putting, I'm asking to put it up right away again to try and garner some more interest. But again, we're still working through that phase. And we're putting things into play in order to still have a presence in the schools. It's going to be somewhat diminished, obviously. But we're, we're trying to do something to keep some of the programs up, like our mini-mountain program and things like that. So we're trying to keep some of those programs until we have some full time in that position.
And although I, Constable Julanowski has, has left now, I gather?
Yes. His last day was February 8th.
Okay. Yeah. My, I wanted to extend on behalf of counsel and the town, our appreciation for the work that he did, particularly in the CSRO position. The, the feedback I received from representatives of various human service agencies in the community is that he was very much engaged, both on the school front as well as in, in relation to referrals made to human service agencies. So he was making the position work.
And, and I would concur with that wholeheartedly. I, I have seen the major inroads he's made in the schools and in, just again, with community partners. He's established that confidence in having a go-to person. And just again, I want to just reiterate the, the benefit that this program does have. So we're trying to get someone in there as soon as possible. And in the meantime, I will keep Dwight advised, as well as all the other partners, to make sure we know when that's going to happen.
All right. Very good. Any questions, Counsel? Counselor Fredericksen?
I have just one question. In, in the community talking people, traffic speeding violations end up being sometimes a big problem in the region. And one of the pieces of information I think about is being able to contact your people, as well as even top contacting local the ATE providers to give suggestions on locations or where they feel that there's high need or a need that isn't necessarily an area that's not, that they feel is not being attended to. Have you got much engagement from the community on that front?
I haven't a lot. I usually get that through Pam, our bylaw people, our bylaw people. The, the issue that I guess I'll, I'll try and stress here, I do have a part to play in how the ATE is deployed. That comes, that comes through, because I'm the Police Chief of Juris- jurisdiction, excuse me. I, I have certain obligations with regards to the automated traffic enforcement. And that comes through everything from where the zones are being enforced, to the trigger speeds that are involved. And I can tell you very plainly that all of the reports that said that people are getting tickets one or two kilometers over are completely false. I have yet to see one. And I would challenge anyone to provide one to me, because I know what the trigger speeds are, because I've set them and they're quite generous. So having said that, that's, I know, moving off topic. But I guess the thing is, when it comes to the setting of the zones, I welcome input, because it, we are going to be doing a review of where everything is. And I'm sitting down with Global, as well as the town, through Pam, and just sitting down and going through some of that stuff to see where exactly, what zones are, can be more or less based upon, based upon where the traffic is and go from there. So.
Counsel Fredericksen?
Evening discussions. And to, do you guys talk about evening versus daytime as well? Like I know, in this particular, one particular case, I mean, this has come up from other things, but one particular case was concerned about 50th Ave, east of St. Anthony School, but in the evenings. So is time of day part of that discussion as well?
Time of day is part of that. Again, the, we also set the hours of operation. And so, again, that's where, that is the RCP's feedback into the program. And that's mandated by Alberta, by the, excuse me, by the Alberta government. So again, those are the things that are guidelines, and they're available for anyone to read on the internet as well. So they know what my responsibilities are and what the providers' responsibilities are.
Thank you for your comments, Staff Sergeant. As you are aware, no doubt, we have a valid question on the, at, at the time of the by-election, February 27th. And it has to do with the community's desire for the continuation of photo radar, both speed or red light enforcement. And your comments in particular about the mythological one to two kilometers over the speed limit tickets. I'm, my hope is that the media have picked up on that and will duly report it and, and disseminate that information, as we have tried to do over the past year and a half. So it's, what I've learned about automated traffic enforcement is that there is no end of distortion of facts to suit people's desire to avoid a ticket. So thank you again for your comments.
Just a couple more additional comments I'm going to make on that, just since I have the venue to do it. One of the things that I would like to stress is become educated on your, on your choice before you make your, your answers to the, to the website that's coming.
Yes.
Look at the, look at the average findings that happen, and then check out what the speeds associated to that are. You're going to be, for a surprise, as to what exactly that speed actually is as well. Make sure that people get educated as to the fact that, I can tell you right now, I get the reports every month, and they are consistently dropping because the culture and thought process is changing. Some people say that it's because people aren't driving around anymore. I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is that people are starting to change their behavior.
In fact, anecdotally, I think most people would tell you that there's more traffic on the road these days, and not less. And so again, thank you for your comments. And I would advise the public that there are reams of information on our website. We have a separate page under Automated Traffic Enforcement. I encourage the public to, again, as the Staff Sergeant indicated, educate themselves prior to making their ballot choice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to decision items, 7.1, Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. In October 1999, Town Council passed Bylaw 9914 to address the highly seasonal nature of town revenues by ensuring adequate financial liquidity for approved capital projects and operational funding requirements. At that time, a borrowing limit of $750,000 was approved to meet current expenditures and obligations of the town until such a time that taxes levied could be collected. Since the initial passing of the bylaw, the town has grown significantly, and the original borrowing limit requires updating to ensure the town has access to adequate monies to meet its financial obligations. To facilitate the establishment of an appropriate line of credit, it is necessary to amend Borrowing Bylaw 9914 to authorize the borrowing of funds from the current level to an amount not exceeding 4 million. With this revised borrowing limit and the establishment of a credit line, administration will be able to ensure funds are available to maintain operations and capital commitments incurred throughout the year. Accordingly, amending Bylaw 201702F is hereby presented for first reading today. Therefore, I move that council approve first reading of amending Bylaw 201702F.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Fredericksen?
The $4 million threshold, is that based on requirements for 2017 numbers? Or is there a cushion for growth included in that number?
Mr. Dibbin? Or, sorry, Mr. McMillan?
There is a cushion for future expenditures. The 4 million number, million dollar number was arrived at by basically taking 10% of our debt limit. This has been historically built into our budgeting process to create, allow us this cushion in case of instances like this. So that is the magic behind the $4 million figure. And yes, it should be sufficient for future years and more than enough for this year.
Essentially, this is amending a credit, an existing credit facility to accommodate current and future requirements. So. Anything further? All right. We have the motion before us. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving on to 7.2, Counselor Fredericksen, Safe and Healthy Community Fund Allocation.
There's no shortage of words on this one, Hank. Ah, the background. Automated Traffic Enforcement Fund Allocation Policy A-04-14 requires that up to 50% of the Automated Traffic Enforcement, ATE, program's net revenues is to be attributed to a Safe and Healthy Communities Fund allocation. In accordance with this, community organizations and groups within the town have been advised of the opportunity to submit proposals seeking financial support for initiatives which promote a healthy and safe community. Applications were reviewed under the parameters of the policy, which include: A, benefit, benefit the safety or health of the community as a whole, or as a specific major group within the community; not duplicate past or present local services unless a need to do so can be demonstrated; provide equal access to the service without discrimination; not already be receiving direct or indirect support from the town for the service; address and identify safety or health need in the community and contribute to the common health or safety of the community; and recognize the town's contribution to the stated service. Six applications are attached for council's review and consideration for a total community request of $33,075. The following is a brief summary of each application. Application one. The Warming Heart Soup Kitchen provides meals and others, and other supplies to individuals in need, as well as a gift card program, which allows for individuals to purchase food, fuel, the ability to communicate, and have clean clothing to wear. This organization has requested funding in the amount of $11,975 for its gift card program. Application two. The Lions Club of Drayton Valley provides different services and activities to members of the community throughout the year. The Lions Club is requesting support in the amount of $2,000 for its fundraising activities for 2017. Application three. Drayton Valley Health Services Foundation raises funds for improvements to the local hospital. The foundation has requested funding in the amount of $5,000 to assist with costs associated with hosting of the Family Fun Night as part of the Festival of Trees. Application four. Brighter Futures requested funding towards the Baby Essentials Program, which is proposed to operate over a three-year period. Funding in the amount of $10,000 has been requested for this program. Application five. Brighter Futures and Pembina Crisis Connection Society is partnered to host a one-day workshop to educate other agencies about family violence, the signs of such activity, services available, and other vital aspects of combating family violence. The partnership has requested funding in the amount of $1,600 for this workshop. Application six. Pembina Crisis Connection Society is planning a workshop entitled Tattered Teddies. It is designed to be a half-day of information and practical approaches for those who are working with children under the age of 12 and who may be at risk of suicide. In support of this workshop, funding in the amount of 2,000, oh, I think we have a bit of a typo there? 2,000, is it $2,500 has been requested? There's no period in there? Okay. Thank you. Of this budget, 2006, of this 2016 budget allocation of $125,000, of this 2016 budget allocation of $125,000, $116,075 remains. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dibbin.
I have been off my game today, but I'm not that far off. Okay. The following are the recommendations from the administration regarding the distribution of a portion of the 2016 budgeted Safe and Healthy Community Fund, based on applications received. Application one. Therefore, I move to approve the $11,975 to the Warming Heart Soup Kitchen for the gift card program.
You're going to take these individually?
Am I doing all of these, or should we do one by one?
It is entirely up to you. If you choose to, we can go through them one by one.
Let's do one by one.
All right. So we have a motion before us for the application one. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Okay. All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Fredericksen?
Application two. Therefore, I move that we approve the request for $1,400 to the Lions Club of Drayton Valley in support of activities which occur within the town of Drayton Valley.
Okay. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Fredericksen?
Um, not necessarily a, a specific discussion, but more or less just reiterating the broadness that we are looking at safe and healthy communities, and that having events that create connections within the community is definitely a way that we do create a safe and healthy community.
Absolutely true. All, sorry, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Fredericksen?
Application three. Therefore, I move that council approve the $5,000 to the Drayton Valley Health Service Foundation for the Family Fun Night portion of the Festival of Trees.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Fredericksen?
Sorry, I just have a question. So 5,000 was the total requested amount from the Drayton Valley Health Services Foundation? Can you specify in any short length of what specifically the 5,000 was for? Like, were there any line items attributed to it?
Mr. Dibbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd refer counsel to page 63 of 109 in the agenda package, which is actually the, the letter that was received from the Drayton Valley Health Services Foundation accompanying this request. The, the request indicated and talked about the, the past events and what has been put on over the, the course of a weekend for past year's events. The paragraph three makes the reference to each year that the committee looks at what its offering is and their intent to look to add elements. I think, I'm extrapolating here, but I think part of that is to evaluate what has been done in previous years and to take a look at whatever service offerings and program offerings that might be there are relevant and of interest to the community. Part of what they are looking at this year is an additional element to teach families about the detriments of texting and driving. The, we are uncertain if that element is completely what the requirement is for the 5,000, but they do make the reference in the following paragraph to the global economic situation, to the fact that in previous years, fundraising has become more challenging. And so we anticipate that the financial request, in addition to this element, is also going to find its way toward other activities that occurred during the weekend. So that was sort of the review and the analysis the administration had done and why we're recommending approval of the full $5,000 requested.
Thank you, Mr. Dibbin. Any further discussion on this? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Fredericksen?
Therefore, I move that application four, Brighter Futures, requested funding towards the Baby Essentials Program, which is proposed to operate over a three-year period. Funding in the amount of $10,000 has been requested for this program.
Sorry, if you can back, I'm not sure that I got.
Oh, no, I didn't. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Over which period of time? One year or three years? That's what I didn't catch.
Oh. I am sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing here. Okay. Oh, yes, okay. Sorry, therefore, I move that council pledges support to Brighter Futures for the coupon portion.
Rita, can you tell us what you've got?
No, I.
I just want to be clear that we've got, whatever it is, is being reflected appropriately in the minutes.
The first one she said, or the second one? So, I, actually, she spoke a little too fast the first time.
Okay, that's, that's all I need. So, what I'm gonna ask is for Counselor Frederiksen to just make her motion for, it's either the one-year period of the Baby Essentials Program or for the, the full three-year period not to exceed $10,000, right? So, whichever motion you wish to make.
Okay. Therefore, I move that we approve application 4, a pledge of support to Brighter Futures for the coupon portion of the one-year period of the Baby Essentials Program.
Thank you, Counselor Frederiksen. Sorry for the confusion there, I just didn't catch it at first. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I think that when we're looking at granting out these dollars to these programs, the more sustainable we can make these programs for the future, the better. And when they're asking for the $10,000, is what I understand would be the three years of funding, that to kind of set that in motion, I think will be important for their programs. They can be planning ahead and what they're going to be doing. It's a program that's really needed in our community, and it's used surprisingly, unfortunately, a lot. And so, I think that if we can provide funding that is sustainable for them for the three years, I think that opens them up to do a lot more with the program. So, I'm not in favor of the one year.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Mr. Dibbin, can you refresh our memory on this? The, where it says in, under application 4, Part B, that's the, the motion that, or the suggestion that Counselor Wheeler is referring to. If it were not to exceed $10,000 pending confirmation of the additional funding required, so the additional funding referred to there is from other sources, and so, how will we do that? If, if, I haven't got to this point yet of amending the motion, but if the motion were amended to allow for Part B as the motion not to exceed $10,000 for the full three years, how will we do that when the complementary funding from other sources has not yet been raised?
So, I think there's two parts to your question, Mr. Mayor. As we understand the activities of the organization thus far, they are attempting to build this program and source from a number of sources the requisite funding that would be required to offer it for a three-year period of time. That is part of the reason why at this point, administration recommends a pledge of support rather than a firm allocation of dollars and then would be suggesting that the method by which that would be conveyed would be a letter of support to the organization advising of council's decision. Whether it was an initial one-year pledge of support, whether it was a three-year for the full anticipated commitment of $10,000 requested, or whether or not council declined to support the program at those times, all those are options for council. Because we would not know at this point in time, and that's part of building the, the program along these lines, is whether or not a one-year pledge of support would be helpful. We think any pledge of support at this point in time would be helpful to the organization in demonstrating municipal support and also then demonstrating that this, this program does, does have legs and it does have some foundation underneath it. So, if council did not want to, we have a motion on the floor, and I would suggest along those lines, you know, council, that's your prerogative, Mr. Chair, that council would vote on that motion. And then, we would, if, if successful, then we would communicate to the organization that council has pledged support financially for this program in its first year of operation. And once the program is established and put in place, we would request that a firm, a firmer number for first-year operations be provided to council so that then council could award an actual dollar amount. The second option, if council wanted to put forward a blanket pledge of $10,000 for the three years, we could communicate that in our letter of support to, to the organization. And then, that would represent the total sum that we have encumbered out of the, the fund for the purposes of supporting this program.
So, the, so in that latter scenario, again, hypothetical at this point, but would that necessarily entail issuing the check for the $10,000 with an acknowledgement that it is to be used over the three-year period? But what if the program doesn't continue over the three-year period? Is there some expectation of refund of dollars? This is what I'm unclear about.
So, at this time, administration is not recommending a firm funding decision and processing of an award. With a pledge of support, we would basically encumber the account toward a maximum of $10,000 if indeed we are then subsequently advised that the program has been established and it will be put into operation in 2017 or beyond. At that point, then administration would come back to council and ask subsequent to the motion that may be passed, then for council to approve the actual awarding of the dollars. So, we are not recommending at this time that an amount of money, any amount of money, actually be formally approved and sent to the society.
Okay. Counselor Frederiksen, did you have something? You do have something.
How does the process work if we're looking at?
Amending the motion?
Amending the motion, yeah.
So, I, the chair would ask council if, if, if he heard an amending motion. So, from Counselor Wheeler, I thought I heard an amending motion. Maybe Counselor Wheeler wants to reiterate that amending motion. Counselor Wheeler? All right. We'll get through this.
I think that the, I'm like, give me one sec, I'm just looking at the wrong page here. I did want to discuss further, is that okay still?
Absolutely, you have the.
Just that the program is already up and operational. This is already happening, they're already doing the program. What they're asking for is the support, that their staff have been donating their time and their funds for bookkeeping has all been donated, but the program has grown so much they can't accommodate that anymore or to continue the program that they're already doing, they need these funds to enhance the service. So, I think that, I'm hoping the program will still be there in the future, but I think that it's important that we consider the funding for the three years, which would be for an amendment to say that the program be for three years, the funding, if they need it.
Are you essentially saying you would like to amend the motion to replace it with the wording in clause B, the full three, have I got that right?
Randy, are you reading off the background or the actual motions that are listed below?
All right. I'm gonna get back to Counselor Wheeler. Mr. Dibbin wants to help us out. And I'm going to let him.
Just a question to Counselor Wheeler. I think what I hear from Counselor Wheeler is desire to even the motion not to provide a pledge of support, but to provide a funding commitment of $10,000 over three years for the program. I certainly respect that if that's the case. I just wanted to be clear what I think I heard.
Yes. Yes.
So, then, I think that if that is correct, it's the meaning that there's an amending motion that would be that, that council approved financial support, given it over three years of the Baby Essentials Program for a amount not to exceed $10,000.
Yes.
Is that your intention, Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just a moment, Counselor Frederiksen. So, Counselor Wheeler has made an amending motion, and I'm going to call for discussion on the motion to amend. So, now, Counselor Frederiksen. Your mic.
I am taking the advice of administration, looking at it as a pledge of support, and mainly, this is the reason, we have had other applications that have come forward that have looked at dollars for operations versus dollars going towards actual things. In this application, are they asking the dollars to go towards operations, Mr. Dibbin, or are they actually going to items? Like, so, what I'm wondering is, I don't want us making a commitment of dollars and then being not entirely clear on where those dollars are going, and I don't want to violate what our application process is.
Mr. Dibbin?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Frederiksen. Part of administration's analysis and review of this going forward was aware that the program is in operation now, but this was looking forward for the future type aspects. I'm now referring to page 65 of 109. The, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down does infer that the general request was for program operations. With a pledge of support toward a program, much like what we've looked at with previous applications, there are elements that our policy and our criteria would allow us to support. And with a pledge of support for the program as a general pledge, we could explore that further. We would then also be able to ascertain over the period of time as to whether or not some of the other fundraising activities are successful. If indeed, the organization can bring together all of the monies it requires to continue the program's operation along the lines, and then what an appropriate use of the public dollars consistent with our policy could be, we do not have that at this point in time, which was part of the reasoning behind administration's advice, that a pledge of support is appropriate for whatever length that council chooses while that's ascertained in what this program could look like with additional funding support going forward.
All right. So, do we have any further discussion on Counselor Wheeler's motion to amend? Counselor Long?
Yeah, sorry. Can, Rita, perhaps you can refresh my memory of exactly what the motion we're about to vote on is?
So, the motion that you're, the motion you're about to vote on would be the amending portion, which says Counselor Wheeler moved to amend the above motion to approve financial support to the Baby Essentials Program for a three-year period to Brighter Futures, not to exceed $10,000 from the Safe and Healthy Community Fund allocation.
Thank you, Rita. So, the, so the distinction between the amending motion and administration's recommendation is that the amending motion is a funding commitment and administration's recommendation is a pledge of support pending the scrutiny of further particulars from the program. So, that's the difference. Do we have any other discussion? This is interesting. Counselor Frederiksen?
So, I know the word pledge is a defining factor between what's amended and what administration is saying. However, I do support, if we end up going down the pledge road at some point in time, I do support having some dollar number attached to that, whether that's that $10,000 that we, that has been brought up, because it does show something. It's not just a letter of support, then, it's, it's showing a commitment and it's holding us accountable to where we are putting our dollars.
I think I see where you're, where you're going here. All right, anything further on the motion to amend? All right. All in favor? Opposed? That is defeated. We're back to the main motion. And I'm not sure if I heard a, Mr. Dibbin?
I was, I was just going to ask that, that question, Mr. Mayor, that I think you might have been, was that with Counselor Frederiksen's initial motion, that the recording secretary was unclear as to whether or not Counselor Frederiksen had indicated a time aspect along those lines. So, just for clarity, I would ask on behalf of administration to Counselor Frederiksen if indeed there was a one or a three-year or a different time that was indicated in her original motion.
Counselor Frederiksen?
The original motion was a one-year period, however, the dollar amount wasn't included in that original motion as well.
Did I hear, I may be mistaken, but did I hear another motion to amend with a pledge of support? Counselor Long, did you say something to that effect?
I feel we don't look the way of history buried down here. I would suggest an amending motion to make this a pledge of support for the three years.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Long. We're all having a kick at it today. So, we have another amending motion. Counselor Long's amending motion, Rita, you're clear on the amending motion for a pledge of support for three years? Right? Okay. Did you have a question?
Just wondering if we're thinking of incorporating Counselor Frederiksen's comment about a dollar figure. Okay, thank you.
All right. We have Counselor Long's amending motion, which I hope we're all clear on. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. So, we've amended the motion to read what Counselor Long has just articulated, so now we will vote on that. Do we have any discussion, further discussion on that? We've amended your motion. Right. Okay. So, do we have any further discussion on the motion as amended? Mr. Dibbin, did you have anything that you need to offer at this point?
The only, just for, for clarity's sake, so that the amended main motion would be that council's pledge to support the coupon portion of the Baby Essentials Program offered through Brighter Futures for a three-year period from the Safe and Healthy Community Fund Allocation pending confirmation of the additional funding required. That would be now the amended motion.
Is that what you have, Rita? Okay. All right, any further discussion? Counselor Wheeler?
So, there's no dollars attached to it, then? So, we're not funding it? Okay. Just a second.
Well, I don't think, sorry, Counselor Wheeler, I think your, your, the tail end of your comments there saying that we're not funding it, I don't think is, would be evident whether or not this, well, if this motion passes, I don't think one could say that. I would say that it's a pledge of support and that it bears further scrutiny of particulars to be provided. Mr. Dibbin?
That's how administration would view it, Mr. Mayor. If, if council passes this motion, council has pledged financial support from the fund allocation for this program. Administration would then go back to the organization, engage in a dialogue with them on the funding criteria, and then ask them for further detail as to program elements that would be aligned with the policy and what those would entail over the three-year period. With that clarity, then we would bring that back to, to council with that additional detail, including the specifics of dollars that then could be used over that three-year period for eligible items, and then further advise council, and then that would lead to a subsequent decision item for council of what that tangible funding support would be over the three years and to what level.
And if, Mr. Dibbin, if that, if that is the route we go, could that information be ascertained in, for the next council meeting? Because we don't want to delay this unduly. All right. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Any further discussion on the motion as amended? All in favor? Opposed? None? That's carried. Counselor Fredrickson, application five? I just want to say thank you, Mr. Dibbin, for your efforts to bring clarity, because it was fairly apparent that I needed some. Counselor Fredrickson?
Oh, my gosh. Okay. I move that counsel award $1,600 from the Safe and Healthy Communities Fund allocation to the Pembina Crisis Connections Society in support of the workshop to educate other agencies about family violence, the signs of the activity, services available, and other vital aspects of combating family violence.
Thank you, Counselor Fredrickson. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Fredrickson?
I move that counsel award $2,500 from the Safe and Healthy Community Fund allocation to the Pembina Crisis Connections Society in support of the workshop entitled Tattered Teddies.
Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Fredrickson, one more time.
I move that counsel approve administration requests attributing $62,356 from the Safe and Healthy Community Fund, Community Fund allocation towards the following projects: solar and blinker stop poles in the school zones, total cost being $24,030; LED upgrades and maintenance, see attached map, total cost $24,973; and 50th Avenue and 38th Street safety crosswalk lights, total cost $13,353.
Thank you, Counselor Fredrickson. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much, Counselor Fredrickson. Before we move on, I'm going to call a short break. Thank you. Department reports, eight-point-one, Engineering and Development, Ron Fraser.
Hi, I'm just going to pass it over to Jen, who's going to go over the annual report for planning and development.
All right. Jen?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. So for, I'll start off with the permits that were issued in January. We had six residuals that were issued, ranging from, sorry, I stepped back up, or mixed up here. So we had, sorry, three residuals. We got the mobile homes, Anasville Mobile Home, and the wheelchair ramp that was installed onto a mobile home. Just nothing out of the ordinary, just some touch-ups there. And then for commercial, we had roughly around five signage and a tree removal. And we had also issued four business licenses, all of them local, two change of names, and two brand-new licenses that were issued. Now, for the fun part, we have before you the report for planning and development for all of 2016. So on the first page there, we have the year totals. We did only issue seventy-one permits in the whole year of 2016. The last time the economy was low was back in 2008, and we still at that point had issued one-hundred-and-ninety-one. So we're about sixty-three permits less than what we had, or one-hundred-and-twenty less than what we had issued at that point in time. We are sixty-three less than what we had issued in 2015. On page three there, we have the development permit values. So in 2016, we had only had 1,582,100 for residential developments. For commercial, we had 4,6820. Industrially, we had 5,025, for a total of 6,095,945.28. Again, that was quite a bit of a difference from even in 2008. The total of all developments at that point in time was 30,246,706. So we had quite a big difference there. The reason why it was so low, of course, was because of the economy. We only ended up with even two housing starts in 2016, whereas compared to 2015, we had thirty-two, and even in 2008, we had fifteen. Right now, as it sits, this time last year, we had about nineteen permits come in. We're sitting at fourteen right now. The hotels have looked a little bit busier this year, so that does look promising, whereas this time last year, the hotels weren't that busy. So we're hoping for a better year. We're already getting actual housing applications in, so that's a good start already. So I'm hoping things pick up here in this year as compared to last year. I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions, counsel? Counselor Fredrickson?
I don't know if you could answer this question, but just, I know these are good-looking-back trends. Are we able to use these stats in any such way to kind of give indications of what things could look like moving forward or looking forward?
I would probably have to, I'd probably have to do some math on that and try to come up with something. It's, I'm not saying it's not possible, but it's really hard to project how things are going to go moving forward, just because everything fluctuates. But I can definitely try.
I think the, part of the perils of, of using historical data to forecast the future are pretty well-established, but I wish you luck.
Thanks.
Anything further, counsel? All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Fairly thin report today, but I just wanted to mention that with sustainability, with our coordinator, Dinet Muley, she's, like we indicated, she's left the town, and she will be starting with the province shortly. But the, the majority of the sustainability work is now heading over into Ms. Livingston's area, which was the Director of Corporate Services. With respect to Public Works, basically, last couple of weeks, they've been doing sanding, they've been working on the catch basins with the rapid melt, I guess, and chasing water, cleaning out the catch basins. And they, we're working out at the toboggan hill for Family Day, getting it ready, doing normal equipment maintenance, just a lot of routine stuff. The Family Day at the landfill this last Monday was excellent. There was a fantastic turnout for the barbecue, horse-drawn wagon rides, face painting, cookie decorating, photo booth, snow painting, tobogganing, and a remote-control rock truck and excavator demo for kids. Canpac and Sonia was there to answer questions about curbside solid waste for the public. We're currently working on planning for the Public Works Week, which is May twenty-first to twenty-seventh, and there will be similar activities as in previous years, demonstrations, and taking counselors out on different types of equipment activities and so forth. Also working early stages of planning for the spring cleanup in May. With respect to the utilities, again, pretty routine stuff, doing some repairs, minor repairs, CCs and so forth, routine plant maintenance and a few meter exchanges. With respect to facilities, our facilities manager, Barry Yakumchak, took a much-needed vacation for the past ten days or so. His assistant has been ill, so we've advertised for a temporary position for several weeks of work to support Barry, and hopefully we'll be doing interviews later this week. And I guess the only last comment is that early stages with Canpac seems to be going quite well. I haven't received much of any calls or complaints or anything, and they've indicated they haven't either, so I think the rollout's happening fairly smoothly for the curbside pickup, so... And that would conclude my report. Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions, counsel? Counselor Fredrickson?
With Canpac being at the Family Day event, I, I know we were running the barbecue. I didn't get a chance to actually go to the table, but do you recall, did they have any sort of things there, education-wise, or was it just face-to-face asking questions?
No, I noticed that they did have material there. There was brochures, there's pens, for sure, because I think I got one. And there was also a lady from the Recycling Council of Alberta that was there, along with the gentleman from Canpac, and so she was talking about recycling and so forth as well. So they had a couple of tables set up there.
And just one other question. I presume some communication has gone out, since I have seen some people talking about it on social media, but have we put out communication regarding the change to the spring cleanup, where we're looking at the scales being opened versus an actual pickup in the back?
That hasn't happened yet. I think we're still in some discussion about the final rollout for this, so...
Anything further? All right. Thank you very much. Economic Development, Eric Burton?
Good morning.
Morning.
So I have a very brief report here. We did have a successful retail roundtable last Thursday. We had twenty-two participants come out. We had a, we started off the day with a leakage assessment, and starting to get people's understanding of some of the challenges and some of the opportunities in retail, especially around where current dollars are leaking out of our community. You know, what are the things that people are buying outside of our community, and because those are the things that are real opportunities for retailers to strengthen. I think that's a discussion that we can explore, how to facilitate more broadly in the community, to get people thinking about not only what it is that they buy out of town, but also get retailers to be able to identify those things, so they can strengthen how they fill those markets. We also had Peter Lee come and talk about some of the businesses in relation to the park. And that really came out of the Tourism Roundtable, where the park was identified as a key anchor of the tourism industry, and in particular, that with, with the park, national parks being free this year, there's going to be an uptick in the number of visitors that are traveling through the region. And as a result, there's a unique opportunity for businesses to be ready for that increase in traffic when it comes to tourism. So, so that was a good conversation to have around identifying some emerging markets. We all, we did have a guest speaker who came and had some experience in retail development. She also co-facilitated the day's event. She brought a unique perspective on some of the opportunities around micro-business and business incubation and pop-ups. And one of the things that I learned is that a lot, this number of businesses in town are already using that as a strategy to help incubate other businesses. So that's, I think, something that we can celebrate and share those local stories about how, you know, the local gym, or local rush stores are helping to foster entrepreneurship and micro-businesses of, of other complementary types of services. So the, you know, as with the roundtable, there are different people come with different perspectives, some with more positive perspectives than, than others. But it's an opportunity to be able to identify what those challenges are and identify what different perspectives are, so that we can start to build capacity in the retail community. And so I think that, that we were able to do that. I'll still have to do a debrief and give some thought to what the key outcomes were, and I look forward to bringing forward a more formal debrief at that time. On the, on the, another front, we're working on the hemp manufacturing cluster project, in fact, meeting with a few folks here today. We haven't received official news about whether we were able to get support from the, from the Minister's Office yet, but we're anticipating a, a letter in the future, so... But nonetheless, we have a lot of work ahead of us, and so we're rolling up our sleeves to, to connect with key stakeholders, including the ZETC and, and Biopopist Group, as well as exploring opportunities for the Chamber to be part of that as well, so that we, they can help build capacity. Because one of the, one of the things I will say about the Retail Roundtable is that at the end of the day, when asked, you know, how many Chamber members, there was five out of the twenty-two people in attendance were Chamber members, and all of them new members. All right? So that really is a sign that there's a lot of momentum growing around the Chamber, and I think that that's, it's important that we support that, encourage more businesses to, to rally behind those who have already, you know, taken the time to start investing in build, rebuilding the Chamber. So those are some of the highlights.
All right. Any questions, counsel? Thanks very much. All right. Eight-point-four, Emergency Services, Chief Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Today, I'm here to present the month-end for January stats on page seventy-three and seventy-four of your package. It was a very quiet January. It's been the quietest I've seen in, in several years. We only responded to twelve, twelve incidents during the month of January. The first one was a, a fire call, which involved a vehicle fire. A tractor-trailer had caught fire, and the tires were on fire, and it was impinging on a tank that it was hauling full of oil. So we had to get it under control very quickly, which the crews did a great job and managed the situation very well. And we also had two motor vehicle collisions. One was a single-vehicle rollover. The other involved four vehicles, three pickup trucks and a semi-trailer. Fortunately, there was minor injuries in, in all of the incidents. We responded to six alarm calls, four of them residential, two of them business alarms. One of them involved, at the, one commercial business was a local hotel in town, which had a faulty detector, which caused the alarm system to, to go off, and we had to evacuate the building until we got, found out how the cause of the, the alarm. We also responded to two assist another agency calls. Both of them were for EMS. One of them involved a cardiac arrest, and the other one involved a lift, a lift and assist, carry to assist EMS. The final call was a miscellaneous call, which was an odor complaint. An individual had called 911 complaining of a gas leak. As it turned out, it was at, an industry, a company nearby that was venting a tank, which created the, the odor. So that's, that's the total for the, for the number, which was twelve. As well, today, as counsel mayor or may not be aware, my job has changed a little bit. I've now acquired another community to look after, which is the Aurora School Community. I will be attending the Aurora School Council this afternoon and doing a presentation on the Fire Service Report that I presented to you today. So I will be over there at noon, at one o'clock today with, for my presentation over there. Interesting part about that, my son has been elected Deputy Mayor, so I had to talk to him as a counselor this morning, and it was an interesting conversation. Any questions from counsel?
I just want to add that we value the outreach work that the Fire Service does, and yourself in particular, and so that's great. I'd like to hear about it after.
Thank you.
Maybe your son could come and give us a report. Anyway, thanks very much. Any questions, counsel? No? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to administration, Communications and Marketing, Tyler Russell?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I just wanted to say a big thank you to everyone who showed up and were part of the barbecue, Counselor Wheeler, Mayor, Mayor McLean, Counselor Long, Counselor Fredrickson, and of course, our CEO, Mr. Dibbin. Thank you so much for showing up. We do appreciate it. Our eyeballs, I think, are still barbecue-filled, I believe, from the, from the weekend. But it was a great time, and it always is at Family Day. I do have a report here for you this morning. We are currently working with our web developer to be able to make our menu section of our website right now to be a little bit more accessible, a little bit more user-friendly right now. We're currently working with them to be able to make the navigation from point A to point B, to point C to D, E, and F. B to point C to D, E and F, a little bit more easier for the public, and of course, for everyone who wants to be able to use it. I know that Council Fredrickson did want to know a little bit about some of our website statistics. One of the website's statistics that she wanted to know is that what pages are people landing on? Our number-one page that we have people landing on is our homepage, followed by the Park Valley Pool, employment opportunities, the Omniplex, and also our events calendar. Those are the top five where people are landing. From the beginning of 2017, we've had thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven page views. That is from January one, 2017. Our average session time is one minute and forty-five seconds. Our site visits are coming mostly organically through Google, Bing, any of the other search engines that are out there. Eighty percent comes from that directly, where people are just putting in our website, eleven percent. And then our social media is nine percent. So whenever I put the tag on there, visit us online, draytonvalley.ca, those are where our site visits are actually coming from. Of that nine percent on social media, ninety-nine point three-one percent are coming through Facebook. That is a huge, huge number. We know what people are using social media lies. Also, I just wanted to give you a little bit, a couple more statistics. Our demographics, our largest user group is twenty-five to thirty-four, and our large, the largest amount of male versus female is male fifty-five percent, female forty-five percent. So I thought that you'd find out those, a couple of those very, very interesting. With our social media, we've increased between January and February by eight percent. On Facebook, our Twitter followers have increased by nineteen percent, and on Instagram, we've increased by five percent. And that's been important.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. Did you have any comment about Council Fredrickson's question earlier on the messaging regarding the spring cleanup?
I have not been in discussions yet, but we will be following them.
Okay. Next, possibly the next council meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Dibbin? Sorry, did you have, somebody have a question? Do you have a question? Yeah? No? Okay. Sorry. Mr. Dibbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. A few items to report on. On February fifteenth, our safety coordinator completed his investigation into the incident last year at the Omniplex Shed involving the discovery and removal of asbestos. That has been provided to Occupational Health and Safety as per the subsequent demand that we had received from the lead investigator. Following that formal requirement, I have also provided the report directly to all staff of the facility, so that they are aware of the summary, the findings, and the recommendations that were made by the investigation members, which included our safety coordinator and also another member of our staff, who was involved in the interviews and subsequent findings. Following this, I will be meeting, we have two individuals who are involved in such matters, who are away on holidays right now. So upon their return, we will then be conducting the necessary follow-up with direct parties involved, after which then I will be responding formally to the findings and recommendations that are contained in that report. We do not have this formally, but the advice that we are being given from the lead investigator from Occupational Health and Safety is that they hope to conclude their formal matters in participation in this investigation by the end of this month, after which we hope then to learn what, if anything, further Occupational Health and Safety may be providing in the way of concluding this investigation. On February sixteenth, just a couple of items to report to council. During the day, administration conducted the follow-up meeting with the citizens' delegation that presented to council on January eleventh concerning the August flooding event and other related matters in the Little Lions Park area. And so that has occurred and followed up on the commitment that council made to the delegation when they were here. Also that evening, I attended the candidate's bye forum, the election forum that was held at the Mac Center, hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, which then leads me to the segue that Monday, the twenty-seventh, is polling day. And we have a couple of volunteer training sessions that are being held tomorrow, one in the afternoon and one in the evening, so that all our volunteers will have an opportunity to attend at a time that's convenient for them. I neglected to thank Staff Sergeant Callahou earlier when he was here, but he has provided a member of his detachment that will be present at the polling station from four to eight PM until polls close. And we are utilizing our contracted CPO hours for the polls opening to the four PM aspect, so that we do have a uniform constable present at the polling station for the requisite time that polls are open. I'd echo Mr. Russell's comments, and it was a great pleasure to participate in the Family Day activities yesterday, and also to slide into the well-oiled machine that Councilors Fredrickson, Long, and Wheeler had established in the first shift, so that the second shift was far too routine. But it was a great event, a great opportunity to be out, my first Family Day at Aspen in the community, and the entire family had a great time. And my daughter managed to partake of some treasures at the reuse-it center at the same time, so we now have to make a reciprocal visit to pay it forward ourselves. And then the last comment I make, and I will report more fully at committee reports at GMP, but the annual general meeting of the Drayton Valley Hospitality and Tourism Authority happened yesterday. The new chair, Ken Mealy, has been elected. Ken is the representative of Lakeview here within the community. And it was a very productive annual general meeting, and I think a lumber of topics of discussion in line with the destination marketing objectives of council. I think under Ken's leadership, are going to see even more fruitful progress toward those approaches going forward. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Dibbin? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to council reports. Council Fredrickson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These aren't in any particular order. I had an opportunity to sit down with the mayor, as well as councillor Bossert, and representatives from Pembina Pipeline. They gave us a presentation on the values of Pembina Pipeline and where they're going with some of their community granting initiatives. So it was nice to have their ear to just talk about some of the things that we have going with regards to our anniversary, our programming, our capital projects. So that was a good meeting. I sat in for councillor Wheeler at Healthy Communities Coalition. And the first part of the meeting, really, we had a presenter from Jasper that presented the Jasper model and how they kind of tackled their wraparound and how they have people in the community that are essentially generalists, that then link people in need of services up with those specific services in the community. After hearing about the Jasper model for some time, I had heard, I heard about it back when I was working with Aim for Success, well before I was on council, it was really good to actually get an opportunity to hear the presentation and get an understanding of what it is, because before Jasper model was just kind of a word, but we didn't really know what it was and how it worked. And looking at it, I see that as our Healthy Community Coalition gets more, gets organized and gets focused on what they're looking at, we're definitely ticking off those boxes that have kind of set Jasper apart in terms of those wraparound services for communities. So that was really good to see. I sat in on the mayor's advisory council at the beginning of the month. It was nice to populate that space again. I hadn't been there since I was elected to council. And it's always nice getting a bit of insight from different people in the community, just to see what the buzz is. I attended the methane reduction strategy conference that was hosted by Clean Energy Technology Center and Gen Seven, where they went over the province's policy, methane reduction policy as it relates to the oil and gas industry. The first half of the day I found was rather interesting. The second half got fairly technical, where, you know, my husband, who's involved in oil and gas, would probably have a better understanding of what they were talking about, but the first half was, was good. And then the Family Day activities, so this was the first time that I was in the first shift. The last couple of years I've been in the second shift, and so I've been walking into the well-oiled machine. We weren't that well-oiled when we first started, but Farrell has a way of whipping people into shape. And I think we were hucking hot dogs and burgers and limited-edition gloves, like the best of them, so it was good. It was a good, it was always fun. That's my report.
Thanks very much. Council Long?
Thank you. Actually, a fairly busy couple of weeks here, so I'm just going to pull out a couple of highlights. February ninth, had the monthly Legacy Project meeting. Things are moving forward slowly, but we do have the West Review completely digitized now, and back in Drayton Valley, that's actually in the library on microfilm at the moment, but not yet at the stage of getting it online. That's the entire West Review, going back to the Pembina News Advertiser, actually the Drayton Valley Tribune, which is nineteen fifty-four. So the written history of our community is, we hope, safe. The issue, of course, was previous to this, there was one copy in the paper office, and in event of fire or flood, potentially would get lost. The next stage we're looking at now is trying to raise a little more in the way of money to get the, get that stuff online, and then advance with the other half of the Legacy Project, which involves recording the verbal, I suppose, stories of those of our early pioneers who are still with us. So that moves forward. On the tenth, as apparently as Council Fredrickson has mentioned, the Gen Seven Methane Reduction Workshop, really interesting, way over my head, but nice to see the Clean Energy Center full, and full of the kind of people that we're trying to build relationships with. So a mixture of provincial government and frontline oil and gas and other sort of green energy-interested folks. So a very positive day, I think. Eric has already talked about the retail roundtable of last week. Again, a decent turnout. I've seen these events in the past not get much buy-in. This had a couple of dozen folks, and a bit of a different mixture than you often get, so happy to see that happening. And then the following day, I had a, with the, what's now called, and I'm not responsible for the name, the North Central Alberta Hemp Alliance, I believe, which is the group that we've been working with essentially, the municipalities within the Drayton Valley Devon Provincial Riding, looking at working together with some of the opportunities surrounding hemp, largely based out of Drayton Valley's Bio Composites Group. So that moves forward. There's actually some folks coming to town from the Netherlands tomorrow that we'll be meeting with. Family Day was great. The burgers were delicious. I had three. And smoke sure does get in your eyes, and I thank Tyler for being my barbecue buddy for the day. Look forward to it next year. And that concludes my report.
Thanks very much. Council Wheeler?
Thank you. I have nothing to report. My weeks were quiet, and between being away for teachers convention and then away at the Winter Cities Conference, it was, yeah, heavier.
All right. Thanks very much. For my part, the, on the seventh, we had, I think, an interesting mayor's advisory committee meeting, and I'll discuss more, that more in a future, future report, the, because I haven't reviewed the notes from it yet, but the, on the eighth, the CETC committee meeting, the Methane Reduction Workshop, otherwise known as Opportunities in Methane Reduction. On the tenth, I was pleased to be invited to give opening remarks there, and for the, much of the morning, the portion of the day that I was able to remain there, very interesting discussion around the economic motivation for industry to engage in methane reduction opportunities. And so I'm hopeful that, and I'm pleased, that the CETC has taken a role in facilitating that kind of discussion in our community with industry. On the fifteenth, as was alluded to, there was a, in addition to our governance priorities meeting, later in the day, a meeting with representatives from Pembina Pipeline, discussing largely what they're doing from an operations perspective currently. Their new facility in Drayton Valley is going ahead as scheduled. The, much of the discussion, however, centered around their community investment strategies and inquiring about opportunities for partnership. So there will be follow-up there. And the following day, I was able to attend, at their request, Pembina Pipeline sponsor, sponsorship of the breakfast program at Drayton Christian School. And we were serving pancakes and et cetera, and to, I don't know, what seemed like about ten thousand hungry kids, but probably not quite that many. It was, it was a busy time. But they got them through and fed, and in a very efficient manner, and it was a delight. Particularly pleasing that both parents and some faculty and students were asking to have their picture taken with the mayor. It was an unbelievable experience, especially at this point in the term. The seventeenth, I was in Edmonton at a municipal law seminar sponsored by our legal providers, Reynolds, Mirth, Richards &amp; Farmer, and there'll be more in my report coming forth from that, but there were some interesting takeaways, particularly surrounding the work to be done on inter-ministerial collaboration frameworks and inter-ministerial development plans, which are now required under the amendments to the Municipal Government Act that were passed just last fall. The, on the nineteenth, I was pleased to get a call from Aaron Heffner from the Drayton Valley Community Foundation, who are cosponsors with Pembina Pipeline of the Small Town Saturday Night in conjunction with Big Valley Jamboree. And they sent a film crew out to interview me, and in our newest park in Drayton Valley, Discovery Park, and interviewed some other individuals in and around Drayton Valley, and many thanks to all who participated in that. And that footage will be used to promote our round-two involvement in Small Town Saturday Night, so looking forward to that. And then the Family Day barbecue, of course, at the Aspen Waste Management Facility, which I usually refer to as the landfill, but I'm told I'm not supposed to use that word. It was a great day. I really appreciated the teamwork from Tyler, from Dwight, from Fay, and probably missing somebody, and the three of you who were there earlier in the day and took the brunt of it, I think, from what I understand. So I got to hand burgers and hot dogs out at a fairly leisurely pace compared to what you guys enjoyed. So thanks very much. It was a great day, and thanks to all who attended, and at other facilities as well. We try to make Family Day an accommodating experience for families in Drayton Valley, and thanks so much to administration for the work you did to make that day happen. And finally, or next to finally, I want to issue a reminder to the public, February twenty-seventh, voting day at the Legion between eight and eight?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty and eight PM? Eight-thirty AM, eight to eight PM, for the by-election, council by-election, as well as the ballot questions on photo radar. And just before I conclude my report, I know Mr. Dibbin meant to bring something to our attention, and I'll give him the opportunity to do so now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In accordance with Section one sixty-one, sub-four of the Municipal Government Act, I have to report to council that councillor Nicole Nadeau has formally submitted her resignation from town council of Drayton Valley. This notice has been provided to me in the requisite format and is effective February sixteenth, twenty seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Dibbin. And of course, it's with regret that we, that we hear that news, and, you know, I've lived in Drayton Valley almost twenty years, almost half of that on town council. that on town council. It's not, it's not, it's uncommon to observe the work of an individual counselor having such a profound influence on both programming throughout the community as well as the built environment itself. There are so many things that Counselor Nadeau touched during her time on town council, and I, no doubt, because she's still in the broader community, will continue to impact affairs in, in Drayton Valley, Ambreso County. So on behalf of the town of Drayton Valley, I want to issue a thanks once again to Nicole Nadeau for her service. With that, item ten point oh is the information items. Items ten point one through ten point six, could I get a motion to receive those as information, please? Counselor Fredrickson, all in favor? That is carried. And could I get a motion to adjourn? Counsel Wheeler, all in favor? Let's carry. We're adjourned.